It is our regular village board meeting, let's call it a tour. It is Tuesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the village clock has it at seven fifty-four P. M. Again, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation, Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, which amends requirements of the Open Meetings Act due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. All the members of the board are present this evening. Anything that regarding regarding public comment, I will afford the members of the board an opportunity to speak and then call on individuals individually to state their public comment if they have some. Also, the public was afforded the opportunity to submit a request until noon today by email to the clerk's office or replacing the written request in the village Dropbox to publicly participate via a live telephone call. None were received, to my knowledge. Also, the same was provided for individuals to drop off their comments by noon today to the clerk's office for written comments that will not be read aloud, but that would be submitted into the record. Finally, each vote taken this evening will be conducted via a roll call vote. We did our, we already did the pledge of allegiance, so Madam Clerk, please call, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Present.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Glotz.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Present. Thank you, Clerk. Item number one, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider approval of the agendas, is such a motion?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded, thank you. Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider approval of the minutes of the regular village board meeting that was held on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, trustee Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recognize Mr. David Sleeper for lifesaving actions at the scene of a house fire at one seventy-three fifty-two Harlem Avenue on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, trustee Brennan. Are you reading something, or is Chief going forward?
Chief, floor here. Thank you, sir. Thank you, trustee Brennan. Mayor Vandenberg, village board members, and to everyone present and watching online, this evening, we're going to honor Mr. David Sleeper this evening for his lifesaving actions on the morning of March fir, March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Firefighters and all public safety professionals swear a solemn oath to protect the lives and if called upon to do so, put their lives on the line to help those who need us. It's said that people run from fire while firefighters face it with courage through their training as a calling. Mr. David Sleeper did what most would not do. He saw a home on fire, stopped his travel home after seeing smoke and fire, and did the only thing that he thought he could do, and that was to help. Through his efforts of knocking on the windows and the doors of the house, all while exposing himself to the heat and smoke from the fire, the residents and their pet, who were asleep in the home, were able to escape. In the hundred-and-twenty-year history of the Tinley Park Fire Department, this is the first citizens' lifesaving award that we have issued, to our knowledge.
Wow.
A medal is being crafted to Mr. Sleeper with it, and with it comes our thanks and appreciation for the valor he displayed on the morning of March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to call Mr. Sleeper to the front for a presentation of a certificate and a chief's challenge coin in recognition for his efforts on that day, so, thank you.
Is the mayor and trustee Brennan?
I've got the great honor and privilege to read the Tinley Park Fire Department Citizens' Lifesaving Award to Mr. Sleeper here this evening. To Mr. David Sleeper, in recognition of the lifesaving actions at the scene of a house fire at one seventy-three sixty-three South Harlem Avenue on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, we present you this award. Mr. David Sleeper recognized the need to place himself into harm's way by alerting the residents of an active and fast-moving fire. On noticing fire and smoke coming from the home, Mr. Sleeper acted to make sure that the residents could safely exit the structure and ensured that the emergency was called into the fire department. Without these actions, the outcome of this fire could have been more tragic with injuries or loss of life. Well, it's our honor to present him with this, as well as the chief's challenge coin that's enplacent on the back, earned and never given with the five virtues that I believe are most important, to always be teaching, always be learning, always be leading, and in this case, to be the example and to make a difference that I believe he clearly did on that morning for us. So, Mr. Sleeper, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, trustee Brennan. Item number four, clerk Darian, trustee Glotz.
Tonight's featured business spotlight presentation is by USA Gymnastics. UGA, gymnastics, rather, sorry. UGA Gymnastics is located at sixty-eight oh five West one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Street and has been in Tinley Park since two thousand seventeen. They currently have fifty employees and continue to grow with a total of three thousand kids coming through their facility each year. Please join me in welcoming Mike Kosiolek of UGA Gymnastics. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Vandenberg, trustees, village staff. I'm Mike Kosiolek from United Gymnastics Academy. Last time it was before you guys, was in the fall, probably in the winter, I guess, of two thousand seventeen, petitioning for a special use permit. We are located at sixty-eight oh five one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Street, next to Menards and the Amish Furniture Store. We pride ourselves on providing products and services for a variety of athletes. United Gymnastics Academy offers preschool gymnastics, recreational gymnastics and tumbling, our popular ninja program, high school gymnastics and cheerleading, competitive gymnastics and cheerleading programs, or teams, excuse me, adult gymnastics, birthday parties, open gyms, and our industry-leading special needs program. At the time, we thought, given the opportunity, Tinley Park would provide an ideal community to host our services. We officially opened our doors in August of two thousand seventeen with eighty-four weekly students, myself and two part-time employees. I'm extremely happy to announce that just three and a half short years later, UGA Tinley now hosts fourteen-hundred-and-fifty weekly athletes. We employ about fifty staff, like she had mentioned, seventy full, or seven full-time employees, and on average, about three thousand individuals a week. We're open seven days a week. We take phone calls about seventy-five hours per week. I'll get probably more into that, as you can imagine, with fourteen hundred kids, schedules and everything like that. Gets pretty intense, but our staff does a great job. To provide you with some context, United States gymnastics statistics show only about ten percent of registered gyms will ever reach a thousand weekly kids. That puts us in the top ten in the country, but most, one of the largest in the state at this point. We've had over fifty-three hundred families in our doors in the three and a half years and over sixty-six hundred athletes. Visitors from forty towns, I stopped counting, frankly, but I was counting all the towns where all the families have come from. At least forty towns have come into Tinley Park for our services. We like to take pride in that as well, obviously, as they do patronize Menards, bringing a bunch of food and other stuff as they're here as well, so we see that. We've trained state champions in both gymnastics and most recently Oak Forest High School's varsity cheerleading state champions. I'd like to call out a few partners that have helped in our success along the way. The Tinley Park Park District has been instrumental, instrumental, SSSRA and the Special Olympics of Illinois. Obviously, our service lists have grown, and we are home to one of the largest variety of programs offering in the state, but we do have some ambitious goals, and we want to grow with Tinley alongside those, frankly. To say we're just scratching the surface on our potential would be an understatement. We have received national recognition from many of our peers in the industry over the past two years as how we've managed to grow so quickly and navigate the challenges, obviously, faced by COVID. And I'd like to share with you the same thing I tell them when they ask, "What's the secret?" Unequivocally, it's our staff. If I could have brought them here today, I absolutely would, because they deserve the recognition. We have the most professional and best-trained staff in the industry, and our programs would be nothing without them. At the time, starting a business, your only focus is really survival. One of the things I pride myself on now is how much I can help them grow. Like I said, we have fifty employees now. We're offering full-time benefits, 401K health insurance to those employees, something I didn't realize how much would mean to them, to provide for them and their families. I'm also happy to report those two part-time employees are still with us today. One of them even runs a call center out in North Carolina for us, so we pride ourselves in keeping them on that. Like I said, moving forward, we work, we look to work with you guys to expand our services. You know, as we grow, we want to grow with this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mike spoke a lot about athletes, and what most of you probably don't know is Mike's a hell of an athlete himself. We had the pleasure of playing hockey together at our alma mater, Providence Catholic High School. His, his beautiful bride, Lindsay, is a phenomenal athlete and gymnast and cheerleader. I mean, she was just, she's better than you, Mike, but you guys are the epitome of what small business is all about, and your determination to hard work, I think, shows clearly by the amount of kids and athletes and anybody that's interested, just walk through your doors. Keep up the good work, man. We're really proud of you. Thanks, Mick. Good seeing you, bud.
Item five. This time, I'd ask the board to consider appointing Colby Zemitis to the position of Assistant Public Works Director effective today, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Thank you. Colby joined the village on March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, and has been, has over twenty years of experience as a municipal consultant, project manager, and village engineer. Since joining the village, he has made a substantial contribution to the village's projects and has managed the services of three engineering consulting firms. Colby holds a bachelor's of science in civil engineering and is a registered professional engineer. This is to consider appointing Colby to the position of Assistant Public Works Director. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Let's call a roll. John, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think Colby's done a great job for us, you know, and I appreciate the staff that have applied for the position and made my, you know, decision and recommendation very difficult. You know, I look forward to working with Colby side by side, you know, with all the projects we have coming, you know, upcoming here in the village. There's a lot of work going on here coming up.
Here, here. So let's make it official, and then we'll embarrass Colby by bringing him forward and giving him the ring, so. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. It's your time to shine. Colby, come on down.
Well, I know we have a short agenda here tonight, but I will keep this short. I just want to thank the mayor, the village board, finance, H R, all the, all the agencies here for all the assistance and everything you provided me here since I started. I spent a lot of time reviewing plans, designing plans, overseeing projects, picking John and Kevin Warkowski's brains, trying to pick up as much information about this town as I could over the years. I have to thank all the time and effort I've gotten from our superintendents, foremen, field crew, ladies and annex, our assistant consultants. I couldn't be where I am without all their assistance, but, so I just want to thank everybody here for appointing me to this position, and I look forward to moving forward in this role. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Clerk.
I apologize to wife and kids. Wife and kids, too. I apologize.
Thanks for taking a chance in Tinley a couple, three years ago. It's been, it's been great working with you. Thanks, Colby. Item number six, this time, I'd ask the board to consider approval of the following consent agenda items. Is there such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Properly moved and seconded. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read these into the record, please?
Item A, consider request for the Knights of Columbus, forty-six ninety-eight, to conduct a raffle on Saturday, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, at Saint George Church, sixty-seven zero seven one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth street, with the maximum value of the prize not to exceed twelve thousand twenty-five dollars. Winners will be drawn at the Saint George Church. Item B, consider payment of impact fees through February twenty twenty-one in the amount of four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars to the Tinley Park Park District. Item C, consider payment of impact fees through February twenty twenty-one in the amount of one hundred dollars to Consolidated High School District two thirty. And lastly, item D, consider payments of outstanding bills in the amount of two million forty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, as listed on the vendor board approval report, dated March nineteenth, March twenty-sixth, April second, and April ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Clerk. Does any board member care to remove any of these items from consent? Let the record reflect there were none, and I'd ask that you call the roll, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero two one, approving an economic incentive agreement between the village of Tinley Park and Boulevard Street Partners LLC.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. On March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the village board held a first reading on the agreement. The incentive package supports the planned improvements for a six-thousand-nine-hundred-square-foot Italian-inspired tapas restaurant, along with full bar, outdoor dining area, banquet space, and carryout-to-go area. The total incentive package will not exceed three hundred thousand dollars. The village will provide upfront assistance up to two-hundred-and-thirty thousand to support the build-out of the restaurant with the remaining seventy thousand paid through sales tax sharing over five years. This resolution is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Does any board member care to comment?
I do. I have a question for Dave. Is, do you know if, or Kimberly, if that lease is signed yet?
I did not get a call that it was signed.
Because according to the agreement, the lease is supposed to be signed, I believe, before this is passed. If, if I can amend it, I'd like to amend the contingent on them signing the lease.
But that's fine.
Can we do that? All right, so I'll make a motion to amend thi, this contingent on them signing the lease with the Boulevard, Boulevard Street Partners.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We'll call a roll on that first, please.
Trustee Berg.
Uh, no.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
No.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Uh, the motion to amend, uh... What's the word I'm looking for? It's real like.
Is approved?
Yeah. We'll take a roll on the, first off, is there any public comment on that item? There is none. We'll call a roll for the whole item as amended.
Trustee Berg.
No.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
No.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. As amended. Thank you. Item number eight, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero zero three, approving and awarding an Oak Park Avenue sign grant to Riz Villa Senior of MedPro Health Providers LLC for the property located at one-six-eight-two-zero Oak Park Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
What was that name?
Go ahead, Mike.
A little bit of a botch there. Riz Villa Senior proposes to convert a single-family residential home to a mixed-use building with first-floor office and a second-floor apartment at one-six-eight-two-zero Oak Park Avenue. The petitioner will be installing a new monument sign. The sign grant will be in the amount no greater than two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Economic and Commercial Commission rewarded, sorry, reviewed the application at its March eighth, two, twenty-twenty-one meeting and voted nine to zero to recommend approval of the grant. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole committee held prior to this meeting, and this resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public regarding this item? Let the record reflect there is none. Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero one two, amending the Tinley Park zoning ordinance to allow a restaurant pickup window in the neighborhood flex legacy districts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. The proposed text amendments will define a pickup window to distinguish it from a drive-through or drive-in establishment and allow a pickup window as a special use for restaurant uses in the neigh, neighborhood flex districts under certain conditions. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and voted seven to zero to recommend the proposed text amendments for approval to the village board. Village Board held its first reading of the Plan Commission recommendation on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and this ordinance is now eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any comments on the board?
Yeah, I did. Just to recap this. On March fourth, the Plan Commission voted seven-zero. This was in front of the board on March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-one. This was all fully in our packet. And what I didn't appreciate, the, um... The questions to, um, staff. When the mayor says, "My only question is, is this being proposed for a certain reason? Is there a particular business that's presented something to the village?" Well, if you've read your packet, it was clearly in there. And then it also stated in the packet, "Village staff has received several short-term temporary requests for such things as curbside pickup parking area." "But requests have also been received for permanent drive-through and pickup windows." "In September, approval was granted for Chipotle that included a pickup window at a location previously operating a drive-through for a bank." "The pickup concept is relatively new, but has been successful in other locations to the added convenience for customers and employees." And then the other comment I didn't appreciate was, Jake, you told Kimberly, "It seems like you made up a definition." This was thoroughly vetted through the Plan Commission. It was discussed and voted seven-zero, and it was all in your packet for the particular question that you had for the project. That's it.
Anybody else have any comments?
Me.
Go ahead.
Although, I just want to understand, are we going to allow gaming at these type of locations? I mean, I think, I agree that it's a great, uh, new idea, you know, getting with the COVID restrictions and giving this opportunity to increase business for them, but I don't want to have gaming parlors continuing to be added in our village. And that's my only concern. I did watch the March eighteenth meeting, the Plan Commission meeting, and when they made the comment that, "Well, this is like Darla's," I got, I, that was concerning. Mike, just to what you're saying. I, I have a March eighteenth that was discussed. It was not discussed at the March eighteenth?
It could have been.
Okay, first of all, you know, I think we're all trying to do the best we can, and I don't think it's... I don't think we should be discouraging people to ask questions. We are trying to make the best decisions we can. And if it, if it means that we have to ask the question, I'm sorry. But staff, understand, we have full-time jobs on top of, you know, the rest of our life. So if I have to ask a question to make sure I'm making a good decision, I have to ask that question. So I hope, I hope that we don't always get talked to about doing that. We encourage our kids to ask questions. I ask a lot of questions, and I do so to, to make sure I'm making a good decision. So with that being said, is, is there gaming going to be in these locations? Is that where, are we going to allow that?
Sure. Um, the pickup is for restaurants, and the video gaming is something that is regulated under the licensing of the village, so it's not a zoning requirement or definition. So that would be up to the village board. If a restaurant is coming in and they're asking for a liquor license, if you want to grant them a video gaming, it's, um, not part of our review from the zoning.
During the meeting that I watched, and I'll go back and figure out what that date was, and I'll correct myself to the rest of, you know, if I'm wrong about the March eighteenth date. But it was in the presentation that he was, was had on, on the board that it was gaming. I mean, it was right in there, and it actually talked about Darla's. That's...
My understanding is he is looking for gaming, but that is not a part of the Plan Commission's review.
I mean, that is, I understand that. I think it's, I want to help our businesses to, I don't want more gaming. You know, that's such a beautiful location. People are coming there for weddings, and they're going to our convention center, and to see gaming machines, blinking lights, is not what I see as the vision for, for Tinley Park, to be the best place we raise, you know, our children, so.
Just, so, you know, Diane, you're not, you're not, oh, oh, wrong. The item I'm talking about is item nine, which was March fourth. And then another part of the project was talked about.
Yes, March eighteenth. That's why, you know, I, I do take the time to watch, and I'm sorry if I get a date wrong, but, you know.
No, I'm just telling you.
I'm just saying.
It has nothing to do with you. It's the fact that...
It shouldn't be discouraging, people.
It's not discouraging. It's the fact that staff was told that they made up a definition when it was, when it was on the packet, and it was clearly discussed, and it was voted seven to zero. That was my concern. I, I, I think it was wrong to put that on staff.
Anything else? I'll clear the record on one thing regarding this item. It was mentioned that I had a conversation with the owner of Durbin's regarding this, um, change of location. To be perfectly honest, that conversation, I believe, took place about two years ago with the owner of Durbin's, and it was regarding his current location and that the landlord was raising the rent substantially and that it was becoming a problem for his business model and that he was looking... He called to see if his liquor license would be transferable, of which I responded in the affirmative that would be, so long as the license would be underneath the same corporate name or liquor license would be under the same corporate name, which is, according to our ordinances in Tinley Park, would be, is the, the law. In that same conversation, the conversation was steering towards the location of potentially South Street. He liked that idea. Nothing regarding the flex district was ever discussed. But I just wanted the record to be clear, because it was mentioned that I had talked to him and that I was in favor of this pretend, particular business model, of which I, I, I haven't come out whether I was or was not. To my knowledge, nothing is, come across the liquor commissioner's desk regarding video gaming for this particular location. So I just wanted to be clear, because that was stated in the last meeting. And I'd like, you know, I'd like everybody to appreciate the full, honest truth. If there's nothing else, then we'll call the roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number ten, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero one five, granting a special use for a restaurant pickup window at one-eight-two-five Oak Park Avenue.
Second.
Thank you. The petitioner, Thomas McAliff, I'm not very good.
McAliff.
McAliff.
McAliff, on behalf of Durbin's, has requested the restaurant pickup-only window in the neighborhood flex zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the special use with conditions in accordance with the plans listed and findings of facts in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number ten, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
No.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero one six, granting a variation for permitted lighting type at one-eight-two-five Oak Park Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved. Go ahead.
The petitioner, Tom McAliff, on behalf of Durbin's, is seeking a variation for allowable lighting fixture types in conjunction with a new restaurant pickup window at one-eight-two-five-zero Oak Park Avenue in the neighborhood flex zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, voted six to zero to recommend approval of the variation in accordance with the plans listed and findings of facts in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you. Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? Clerk, please call a roll.
Roll call for item eleven, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
No.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twelve, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider ordinance twenty twenty-one dash O dash zero one seven, granting a variation for minimum apartment size at six-seven-three-two one-hundred-and-seventy-third streets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The petitioner, George Fay Curry, on behalf of GFC Tinley LLC... The petitioner, George Fay Curry, on behalf of GFC Tinley LLC, is seeking a variation to permit a 557-square-foot, one-bedroom, multifamily dwelling instead of the minimum requirement of 800 square feet. A property located at 6732 173rd Street in the downtown flex zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on April 1st, 2021, voted five to one to recommend approval of the variation in accordance with the plans, conditions, and findings of facts listed in the staff report. The Plan Commission included an additional condition that any existing fire codes or egress violations be corrected prior to occupancy. This ordinance is eligible for first reading tonight.
Any comments on the board?
I must say, of course. So again, when I watched the meeting, and this was being discussed, there was concerns of doors locking behind people. And again, I guess I'm, I'm asking, what kind of, you know, when the inspection, I assume we do annual inspections on every business?
The fire department does annual inspections, correct.
So how do we make sure that something, I mean, people were locked in the building? There was, you know, Durbin's has a way of, you know, they could put, I guess, tables up and safety. How do we catch that on an inspection that, that shouldn't have to be the residents coming here or the business owners that are coming here to tell us about that? Should we, you know, know that that was an issue already in that building, that the door was locking behind people? Or no? That's not something that would be covered under our inspections? For safety?
I want to speak.
Oh, it's definitely, that's definitely one of the checkpoints for the annual fire inspection.
We review, and the last one is to understand, you know, is there a weakness? Do we need to make a change? Make sure this doesn't happen?
I can't speak to the fire department, but I can state that the owner has corrected the locking issue. I did confirm with our fire department that they were out there, a locksmith was out there, and that has been addressed. So that particular issue has been addressed, as well as some of the other complaints that were raised by the landlord with some of the tenant issues, that they did go out there and promptly address those issues. So, you know, we always work with our businesses for compliance, generally. Sometimes a warning is all they need, and they, they make those corrections. But I, I don't know, I don't know if this was a particular issue that was, was apparent. I can't speak to that, so.
I suggest that we maybe take a look at our, you know, do a couple last inspections and see, did we miss something? Just for the future, learn, lessons learned. And I assume, seeing that there's nobody here to talk about this, that the, the business owners had their concerns, are okay with it, no?
I know the may, one of the big issues was the locking, and that, as far as I know, has been addressed.
No. Well, I think the other one was concerns that you're going to have a residence open, you know, people could be coming in and out when there's a business. But again, if they're not here to make that complaint, I'm going to assume that they're okay with that, no?
There's a comment from the rear. Sir, would you mind coming up to the podium? Sorry, we just need to do it for the record. That's all.
I appreciate you coming up. I understand. My name is George Fay Curry. I manage and own GFC Tinley. I've owned it for over a decade, prior to Durbin's, and prior to numerous times we've had interesting comments earlier about the subject prior to this, that Durbin's is complaining about the landlord raising the rent. That's actually why we asked for putting an apartment, a dwelling, in the building. Durbin's, for the last six years, has not paid their share of agreed lease agreements, and part of that is their taxes. And part of those taxes is his increase, which the county increased on Bremen Township has increased upon us. And I mentioned it at the last meeting, when you raise taxes on a property above $4,000 a month, I don't know of any business or any property owner that can survive that. So we tried working with Durbin's in five years in litigation, and $50,000, almost $45,000 in attorney's fees. We still got a partial payment and a settlement of probably 25% of what we're owed, besides spending $45,000 in attorney's fees. So I said, you know, we're going to go this route to lower the taxes, put an apartment there. And just yesterday, I got a 20-point list of things that the board is requesting. I understand safety, and I understand what the requirements are, but we can only stretch things so far. With the safety lock mechanism is why I came up here. We addressed it the same day. I called Goldie Locks, because Goldie Locks initially installed the locks on those doors. And it's nobody's fault. It's a common oversight that when the guy came out, I was out there, and when that lady was there, I happened to be there that night. There is an exit to the side. You are right about tables and chairs that are blocking in the hallway. I've had that discussion, it's always blue in the face, as they say with Durbin's. And I was here last week, on Thursday, actually after the board meeting, I'm sorry. I went over to Durbin's, and I pointed out to their manager. I called John, who is managing it for his dad, and explained to him the situation that I just came from board meeting, and I had two of my tenants sit here explaining their concern. And I said, this has been an ongoing thing for over quite a few years. So I mentioned it Thursday night. I went back over there on Friday. It wasn't corrected. The board actually asked me to call the fire department, which I don't want to rat anybody out. But since Thursday was not effective after the board meeting, I called the fire department, and Dan is very well informed of the situation. I met Matt Riordan.
Steve Lorendo.
Thank you. Steve Lorendo there. And, you know, we discussed the situation to correct the problem. I didn't even look there today. I came to the meeting, because I was running a little late. But I was actually not late. I was way ahead of myself, but I'm hoping the situation's been corrected. I took pictures, and I called John again, and I said, let's get the situation on the contour. And Steve made comment and made a note of it. I don't know if he was out there Monday inspecting it. It's not my job. I can't. I'd love to do it, but, you know, after a while, you run out of things, and again. So it's been a lot of things going on. I stand here before you to put back an apartment, which was there way before when I bought the building, and try and bring it back, because the office tendency is, so not only downtown Chicago, but across the board, offices are, people are working remotely. I hear people turning their dining room into offices. I mean, in some areas, you'd be surprised. And when you tell me that ridership is down from 30,000 to 5,000, that tells you something about our society. Unfortunately, this is where we live today. So the door locks are corrected. It's just a stupid oversight of the locking mechanism, where the cylinder itself wasn't lined up. And when he looked at it, he goes, it was just, again, it was just an oversight. And I thought the problem was corrected, and that day was, the next morning, it was corrected on Friday, as the young lady can attest to. And Steve Lorendo is, you know, was there for the inspection, and I'm hoping that the solution with door locks and exits is resolved for anybody in any building. It's a, it's a, it's a common mistake, you know, when the management's not around for somebody, that I'm not making excuses for Durbin's or anybody. Somebody puts a door, and it's just, you know, I told them, put a sign there. Don't put chairs and tables in the hallway for anybody, in any place, so.
I appreciate that, and please do call, because, you know, it's
Well, you know.
We'd rather have somebody get a little, you know, they're going to get, you know.
You know, when I left here, I went straight there, and I said, you know what? And I came back the next morning. It wasn't corrected from the night before, so I said, you know, let's call the fire. And I guess if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. But you don't want to be the one to do it for your own building, you know.
I agree.
This is eligible for first reading tonight, so we'll be back before the board next Tuesday. I would ask that we'd have this confirmed, that it's taken care of by next Tuesday, that the issues in the hallway are with the tables and chairs, right?
Yeah. I'll be back there tonight, so I'll take a look. And Durbin's still is, we made an agreement with them. They're paying concession rent. And I made a comment to them that, you know what? Based on what the state requires occupancy at, again, we're getting a discounted rent, even as we speak at the beginning of the year. So, you know, we're struggling with them, as they are making another expansion to open another location, and they're dragging their feet with us. And I know they've been a long-term tenant with us, but we've had other tenants before them, and, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had a, I had something to say. Kimberly, if you, if you could please contact, as it sits now, being a 31% variation, I'm not in favor of going from 800 all the way down to 557, especially because of the comments that were in here about you have businesses that now are going to share a hallway with, with someone renting an apartment, which they were concerned about. So the only thing I ask Kimberly, I'm a, I'm a no, I mean, I vote yes, so we can get it to the second reading. But in the meantime, could you please contact the Love Inc. in the salon and see if the lock that he fixed, do they still have other concerns about safety with sharing the hallways with them with their business and stuff? Or are they, or is that basically, like he said, their main concern, and they're fine with it? Because that's, that's my biggest concern, is, number one, is the size of the variation going down to 31%. And then, you know, put an apartment, sharing it with commercial space. But if they're okay with it, they're the ones renting it, then I'm fine with it.
So may I ask you, what is mixed-use properties?
He wants an office.
I'm sorry?
Generally speaking, a mixed-use is commercial and residential.
That's all I can say.
When they were renting it, was it an apartment when they were renting it?
The building, there was apartments up there.
When they, when the two concern, when they signed the lease agreement with you, was it an apartment building, or was it a commercial space when they signed it?
No, it was an office. It was actually, it was a nursing home assistant.
And that's my point. They signed the lease with it being a commercial space. Now it's going to be a shared, shared hallway with an apartment for, and that's my concern.
Okay.
So like I said, if they're fine with it, with that, then, you know, I'd be more than happy to, you know, go along with it. But if they're not, that's a concern I would have. I rented it, if I was them, I rented it as a, as a commercial area, and now we're changing it to a 557-square-foot, one-bedroom, which is, I mean, if it was 700 square feet, it'd be a lot easier. 557 feet isn't very much, and it's going down to 30, 31%. And I think, Kimberly, wasn't this being, was this being, is this the one that was being changed over before it was even approved, or am I thinking of something else?
As far as we became aware of it, because work was being done.
Yeah, so that's, so work was even being done before you even came to the board? Is that correct, to change it?
We were putting it back to the apartment that it was, and when we bought the building. So, and then when we were informed that we need to get the board permit from the village, we went and applied for the village permit. And trustee Glotz, if you weren't informed at the last meeting, Link is a, loving the name of Christ, is a nonprofit organization. We gave him a discounted rent, as I do with most organizations I work with. And their position there is that they're welcome to stay if they want to stay at a discounted rent at literally almost 50% of what the space would normally get. And Sonabella is informed that evening and before, even though she said she wasn't, and I talked to her outside in the hall, that there will be an apartment up there. The other thing I can do is what other people did down the street, the gentleman that bought the property is asking for variance to lower his taxes. Then I would maybe just go that route and ask for more funding from the TIF grant from the village, so I can just put myself in a better situation and use the village money. Maybe that would be a better option for me.
Whatever option works best for you.
Yes. But again, it is mixed-use properties are commercial with residential. I understand your concern, and they're welcome to, I'll get it from them in writing, if they're not.
You have to get it right. Kimberly, I mean, Kimberly will call them, and if they're, if they're fine with it, then I, I trust Kimberly. If she calls, she's not going to tell us something different.
Do you own property, trustee?
I appreciate you going to get it in writing. That's not necessary. Kimberly can call them for you and notify the board.
Okay. Do you own property, trustee?
I'm not going to answer that.
Okay. Well, when you own property and your taxes go up $4,000 a month, I don't know of any business. And I've owned numerous businesses in the country, in downtown Chicago, as well as in the suburbs. And I can tell you, I've dealt with increased rent. Because when you can sell a can of tomatoes, I was in the grocery business, I've been in the food and beverage operations, I've been multiple businesses. And I can understand Durbin's or anybody else's, but as a landlord, can you pass $4,000 a month increase on tenants? I asked the board, can you? What business can survive it? Yeah, you'll have more vacancies, like you do down the street and up the block, and look in other neighborhoods, and look in other towns, especially with COVID, and regardless of COVID. So I don't know who can survive that. And I'm looking at your budgets and what you ask for. And everybody, the gentleman stood up here and lowered his percentages four times, 7%. That's great. That's 28% savings for the village. That should have been applauded here. It wasn't just 7%. It's four departments that he lowered it by 7% as he stood here before you. That's what every village needs to do. That's what every town needs to do. They got to operate like a business, not like it's a money machine, we continuously raise taxes on property owners or businesses.
Sir, if we could wrap up your
I am wrapped up.
I appreciate you coming forward and answering the question.
I am wrapped up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you answering those questions.
Appreciate the time.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As it was mentioned, this is eligible for first reading. I would still ask for a roll call on this.
Roll call for item 12, trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
No.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance 2021-0-018, granting a special use for a substantial deviation from the Hickory Creek PUD with exceptions to the zoning ordinance.
Sir, a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The petitioner, Robert Bettenarty, on behalf of RJB Tinley Park Real Estate LLC, is seeking the approval for a building area expansion and exceptions from the zoning ordinance, including permitting front yard parking and minimum drive aisle with at 7650 Graphics Drive in the ORIPD zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on April 1st, 2021, and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the special use in accordance with the plans, findings of facts, and conditions in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Is there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Please call the roll.
Roll call for item number 13, trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 14, trustee Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to consider adopting resolution number 2021-R-029, approving an amendment to resolution 2011-R-11, a proposal from Van Bruggen Signs Incorporated for the purchase of a digital Jumbotron sign.
Sir, a second. Thank you.
Thank you. The village board recently approved a quote from Van Bruggen Signs for a digital billboard at the convention center. The proposal was for a 10-millimeter display, which has electrical requirements that are above what is currently installed. Van Bruggen can install a 16-millimeter display that will not require installation of upgraded electrical service and will provide a cost savings of $2,378. The 16-millimeter sign does not have a noticeable difference compared to the 10-millimeter. And Van Bruggen Signs will supply and install the new Jumbotron sign at a cost of $119,540. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole meeting prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Trustee Burke, any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public regarding this item? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number 14, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 15, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to consider ordinance 2021-0-014, approving the annual budget for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2022, for the village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. On March 16th, 2021, the committee of the whole met and recommended approval of the proposed budget for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2022. The proposed total expenditures for the general fund is $54,458,913. The Tinley Park Public Library is also included in the proposed budget. And the proposed total expenditures budget for the library's general fund is $6,000, 6,378,350. The proposed total expenditures, expenditure budget for the village funds include the Tinley Park Library is $1,473,409. In accordance with the state statutes, the public hearing was held prior to this meeting on April 13th, 2021. As required, a copy of the proposed budget has been available for the public inspection on the transparency portal of the village website since April 6th, 2021. And this ordinance is eligible for first reading.
Thank you, trustee Galante. Any comments from the board? Roll call?
Roll call for item number 15, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 16, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to consider resolution 2021-R-022, authorizing the transfers from the general fund, water and sewer operations, and maintenance fund in the computer parking lot operations and maintenance fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This resolution implements a series of year-end transactions following established fiscal practices as outlined in the fiscal policy manual. These transfers are supported by the excess of the revenue over expenditures that may exist at the April 30th, 2021 fiscal year end or from the fund balance of the designated fund initiating the transfer. The transfers are made to support the capital and debt services fund for both the short and, for both the short-term upcoming fiscal year and the long-term beyond this fiscal year. The financial needs of the village to support the replacement of the infrastructure, equipment, and provide the debt services on the outstanding bonds. The resolution established not to exceed amounts in the amount of $10 million for the general fund, $3 million for the water and sewer fund, and a million from the commuter parking lot fund. The actual dollar amounts of the transfers may be less and will be determined once at the fiscal year end close. This resolution is eligible for first reading.
Thank you, trustee Galante. Any comments on the board? Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 17?
Consider adopting resolution 2020-R-023, I dot resolution 21-00000-00-GM, authorizing an appropriation of up to $3 million in motor fuel tax MFT funds for the fiscal year 2022 pavement management program.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Passage of this resolution will allow the village to competitively bid the project prior to most surrounding communities in an effort to obtain the best possible unit pricing. This item was discussed at the COW on March 16th. And prior to this meeting, resolution is eligible for adoption.
Is there any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? John?
Correct bet, that dollar, it's $3,100,000.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the public? Please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, amended, thank you. Item 18?
I'd like to make a motion, consider adopting resolution 2020-R-024, approving a professional service agreement between the village of Tinley Park, Robinson Engineering, for engineering services related to the fiscal 2022 pavement management program.
Sir, a second? Thank you.
Thank you. Final costs of this agreement are in accordance with state requirements and will be based on a percentage basis of the PMP awarded amount, 3.5% for design, 6% for construction observation. This item was discussed at the COW on March 16th. And prior to this meeting, resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? Thanks. Van Robinson, thank you. Appreciate it. This will be a roll call. Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number 18, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number 19?
I'm going to take this one, Mr. Mayor. I move, we consider adopting resolution 2021-R-025, approving a purchase between the village of Tinley Park and modular communication systems for phase one equipment purchase.
Sir, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
To improve the police radio system coverage and operation for improved inbuilt building coverage throughout the village, led staff to engineer a multi-site or simulcast system. Currently, the radio system transmits to dispatch from a single site when field operations occur. This limits the potential of the signal, signal and system. A simulcast system allows multiple transmissions at multiple locations, therefore creating a larger coverage footprint. Staff recommends purchasing equipment for phase one of the system. Quotes were requested and received for two responsive vendors. Both proposals are industry-standard quality equipment serving public safety, public service agencies. In review of the proposals, it is recommended of the staff that the village board approve a purchase with modular communication systems for the Tate system to our simulcast upgrade as reflected in the proposal of $66,800. This item was discussed at the committee of the whole held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public? Let the record reflect there were none, please call a roll.
Roll call for item number 19, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 20?
Thanks, Mike. I'd like to make a motion, consider adopting resolution 2020-R-026, approving a purchase for police department radio upgrade nine receiver sites.
I'll second it.
Thank you. In review of the proposals, is the recommendation of the staff that village board approve a purchase with modular communication systems for the Tate solution to our simulcast upgrade as reflected in the proposal of $46,404. This item was discussed at the COW held prior to this meeting. Resolution is eligible for adoption.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Let the record reflect there were none, please call a roll.
Roll call for item number 20, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. I am 21.
I'd like to make a motion, consider adopting resolution 2020-R-027, approving a contract between the village of Tinley and Enterprise Fleet Management for vehicles leasing and replacement program.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. The village owns and maintains 347 vehicles and equipment. Public Works has annually presented maintenance and replacement recommendations for the fleet that assists staff as we carry out the village's mission. Therefore, the primary goals as vehicles and equipment are reviewed are that the vehicles are safe, reliable, and provide functionality at economical cost. Consider awarding a contract to Enterprise Fleet Management for leasing of vehicles as recommended in the fiscal 22 program. This item was discussed at the COW held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public regarding this item? Let the record reflect there were none, please call a roll.
Roll call for item number 21, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, item 22?
I'd like to make a motion, consider adopting resolution 2020-R-028, approving a contract between the village of Tinley and JJ Newell Concrete Contractors for the flatwork and curb repair program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. The village utilized the sidewalk and curb repair services of J&amp;J Newell Concrete Contractors the last two years for maintaining and constructing sidewalks and curb repairs on our village-owned properties. Consider awarding a contract to J&amp;J Newell Concrete Contractors in the amount of $202,588.69. This item was discussed at the COW held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Any comments on the board? Any comments from the public regarding this item? Let the record reflect there were none, call a roll.
Roll call for item number 22, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glots.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 23, receive comments from staff. Is there anybody from staff this evening? Dave?
Just a couple of things. First of all, really just to echo Andrew's comments. Great job by the whole finance department, the other departments. Really a very smooth process this year. But I also just wanted to thank, I think, really everybody on staff. This was a really difficult year budget-wise. A lot of, all the departments had to make some sacrifices. And I think due to their sacrifices, we're now really in an excellent position coming out of COVID. But it was a difficult year, so I just really wanted to thank everyone who made that sacrifice. Also, just to congratulate Colby, so I'm looking forward to working with him in his new position.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else from staff? Nope, thank you. Item 24, receive comments on the board? Anybody from the board this evening?
I do, no, Diane does.
Actually, I.
Diane, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to say, you know, I can't help, I want, I can't help but wonder how the children in the world today are seeing the country. Our country has become divided and it's based on the channels we watch and the spins that are on the news. Opinions are taken over for facts. And we have, we've forgotten at times what we, the basic stuff we learned as children. Kindness, compassion, honesty, and empathy for others. These are more than just words. Our children are given rules and guidelines that's set by the parents, the educators, and the adults in their lives are rewarded for good behavior and discipline for poor decisions. It's how, it's how they learn. Children's behavior has to be changed and they grow up to be better adults. I believe as leaders in this country, we, they must set the standard. They must remember the basics, put people's feelings, put their personal feelings aside and come together for the good of the people that they represent. I just have one simple question. Are we leading by example on this board? I challenge the board to take a hard look at the last two years and ask herself, have we felt the promises that we made? Or did we just jump on board? Are we strong, positive leaders for the children in our community to be looking at? And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Citizens Police Academy is doing a fundraiser for soft goods. And if anybody has donations and wants to get in touch with the Citizens Police Academy, they would be very grateful for your donations. That's it.
Trustee Brady, you have something?
Yes, stating from, coming from the mayor, the board and our staff. I want to take this moment to remember Danny Sullivan, who is the father of one of our police officers, Keith Sullivan, who passed away this past week. He was married for 50 years. And he was the, the member of the great Shannon Rovers. He was the drum major, as well as one of the other physicians as well. And we had his funeral last Saturday. And I knew him from my church as well. And just to send out sympathy from the mayor, the board, and the staff to Danny Sullivan's family.
Thank you, trustee Brady.
There you go.
Any other comments on the board before we proceed?
Yeah, I got one more, I got a couple of things here, Jake. First and foremost, I just want to recognize our dispatchers and our 911 center. It is National Telecommunicators Week. So if you see one of them, please give a quick thank you and quick recognition for all the work that they do for our village and responding to all of our police and fire emergencies in such a quick and professional manner. So I just wanted to recognize them. On another note, I, I want to say something else that's really been bothering me. I want to be crystal clear about this. And my family and I have lived here for our entire lives. And I want to continue to live here for the rest of my life. When I ran for, for the board spot in 2019, I ran to make a difference because I love our community. And I wanted what's best for our village. Anyone that knows me knows that I don't partake in any of the drama. I'm not a, I don't, I don't, it's not, it's just not me. So unfortunately, recently, myself, my wife, my four kids, and my livelihood were brought into, into this when a vexatious litigant decided to send a letter to my employer trying to go after my job. I don't take kindly to that. I think it's sad and pathetic. And, you know, I've also, you know, become aware that the mayor and trustee Galante have been providing attorney-client privileged information and communications